We're at planning board meeting of September 3rd, 2013. If we could please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under new business this evening, we have a sign permit for United Parish of Carver, 115 Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, we have the pastor, Mr. Barden, and Greg Brenner from Brenner Signs. And you'll see the sign, they're actually just replacing the signs that is there now. And it does meet the bylaw, there is an exemption in the bylaw for churches and schools and nonprofits. And it does meet that, and I'll let them explain.
Awesome, great. Yeah, just, Ed, you guys all have a copy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, simply what Jack said. The overall signed footage is thirty-six square feet, which is what's there now. So we're replacing it with the exact same sizes. Just a little cleaner, professional look. And it's gonna be made out of MDO plywood, primed, finish coated. And actually, the image that's going on the front of this is gonna be a printed image that will be laminated with a ten-year lamination, so you don't have the fading and different things like that happen to it. And the poles that are there are gonna be the same, we're leaving them right there, they're in good shape. They're PVC posts covering a wooden post, and we're gonna repaint the PVC over there also. Clean it all up, make it look like it's brand new.
Looks very nice.
It's a beautiful sign.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I'm good with it, Mr. Chair.
So what we have is the new one at the top of the, what you've given us, and this is the old one at the bottom?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, it does, it does look nice. Was there lighting on this originally?
Uh, there were spots from the bottom.
Landscape lighting.
And those will stay?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
No questions, Bill.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the sign for United Parish Church with following conditions. Existing landscape lighting to stay, and I don't think they'll need a building permit or whatever. We'll just put it in there just in case.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Congratulations on tomorrow, at what time can they pick it up?
Ten.
At ten tomorrow, you can just walk it over to the building department. I don't know if you're gonna need a building permit since you're only doing the slats here, not the foundation.
Just put the, what's in between the posts, yeah.
I don't know. Do you know, Greg?
Um, you know, every town does it different. It's so true.
I don't know where to go with that one then. So who knows? But you'll find out.
Yeah.
You just bring it over and then they'll let you know.
Awesome.
All right?
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, the fee was zero because there are...
Absolutely. Good night Reverend.
And we didn't have to check on taxes because we're not taxed.
All right, the next item of new business is receipt of plans, Form A for Meeting House Road Lane.
Yes, if you could take the time to open up these plans, I, this is just a receipt of plans, I'm not asking you to endorse anything yet. But I wanted to walk you through, and I did this with the chairman earlier, if you remember, Meeting House Road. And I had worked on this a little bit with the former member, Mr. Kingsbury, about the status of this road. Kingsb-, I mean Kingsbury. Meeting House Road and Meeting House Road Lane are not accepted by the town. However, they are maintained by the town. The town does snow removal, they do maintenance, they've done improvements, which I'll get to. So I wanted you to know that. If you could also then look in your packet. Back in August of nineteen ninety-seven, the planning board actually denied a Form A because of the frontage requirements of the right-of-way. Then, in November of ninety-seven, they approved the Form A, provided that four, four items would, or three items would be done to improve the right-of-way, and six trees and their stumps had to be removed, servicing of the two turnoffs and the increased width. I should add that all these things were accomplished. Then, in December of nineteen ninety-seven, it turned out that that vote that they took in November was evidently illegal. They had a, somehow, if you read this, you can take this home and read it, but they had some kind of emergency meeting and the clerk determined it wasn't legal. So they voted again, and they did approve it as a Form A. I looked through the minutes of that meeting, and there was testimony from public safety officers, including Chief Harriman, and I forget who was the police chief at that time, and they both testified that it did meet their satisfaction. And then, I also put in from your rules and regs, what adequacy of way is how it's defined. And it's that it's sufficient with suitable grades and adequate construction for vehicular traffic, specifically public safety. And then lastly, is a notarized letter from the town clerk that this is maintained by DPW. So even though it's a little complicated, and it is quite different, that we haven't dealt with much like this as far as right-of-ways, I think it does meet the criteria in your subdivision regs as a, as a town maintained with, right-of-way with suitable access. I would also encourage you to line up there, I did go up there, I think with Will. And you'll see that it is paved and it's not a bad road, it's, there's certainly town-accepted roads that might not be as good as that road. So that's my, my story here, I just thought you should...
Mr. Chair, through you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm reading this, this letter dated December eleventh, Jack, ninety-seven. It was addressed to the town clerk.
Yep.
Says here, um... Just looking for clarification on the, where the district attorney...
Yep.
Office said that it might, might be an invalid vote due to not, not appropriate time of posting.
Yep. And then, if you read the last paragraph, they moved to correct the errors of the revoting issue.
Got it. Got it.
Yeah, there was some kind of issue going back there, it was quite a while ago, but, uh...
Yeah.
Fifteen years ago, but something happened.
Does anybody wanna go out and take a look at this, have a site visit for this, or...
I just, maybe just ride up there. It's not very, it's a short little...
What's the address?
Just, uh, me, go on Meeting House Road, it's right on, going into North Carver on the right. And just follow it, and you'll s-, the pavement ends, and that's where this right-of-way ends, right where the pavement ends.
Are there, are there houses that this...
There's a house on the corner where the bend is, and then there's a, and then there's houses on the right, or to the east of the right-of-way, east of where the subdivision is being proposed.
Jack, any taxes owed on this?
No, Kathy checked.
Okay.
Um, the engineer or surveyor will be here in two weeks.
Okay, we can ask some questions then.
Yeah, you can ask some more questions about this, but it is a little, it's not the most, it's not the most normal Form A, but I, I did a lot of research on this.
Can we get it electronically? Ask for him to send it over there?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Yep. That's the one thing we don't have, is we don't have the capabilities of making a PDF out of these large plans. I know Buzz does, and when he was across the street, I used to run over there sometimes. He could probably struggle to do it for us if I, if this guy can't, but I'll ask him.
Do they have to be scanned and...
Yeah, he had a printer that scanned, you know.
Yeah, right.
A plotter that scanned.
Yeah, twenty-four by thirty-six inch, yeah. All right, under new business again, the last is a consideration for endorsement Form A on South Main Street.
Yep, uh, this one, um, I wanna make sure I get the right one here. This is meeting, oh, there it is. This one we, we heard two weeks ago, this is the one where there's two lots existing with two houses. And they want to join those two lots and then subdivide it into three with obviously a third lot for construction. It meets the frontage requirements, it meets the lot size requirements. And if you look at the building envelope, especially for lot, the proposed lot two fifteen dash one D, it also meets the, I'm, I'm sorry, the one south of two fifteen one D. It does have a building envelope that's accessible, so I think it meets the bylaw. They went to quite an extensive project here by having all the wetlands flagged and approved by the Conservation Commission. So there's absolutely no question about where the wetlands are and whether this new lot can be accessed, and in my opinion, it can. Come on up.
I'm the surveyor.
Oh, Mr. Rainey, how are you, Bill?
Hi, good.
We've talked.
So the wetlands have to be counted as part of the lots, or...
You have to have...
The area of the lots subtract from the area of the lots?
You, you need about, a little less than forty thousand square feet of upland, and as you can see, he's, he's easily over that on all of them.
All right. Looks pretty straightforward.
No, no, any questions for the applicant, just for you guys? Taxes paid? Thank you. I'm all set.
Anybody else have any questions?
Make a motion to endorse the Form A for, let me see if I can get it right. South Main Street, do we have the applicant's name? I can't read it.
Harden, Harden.
Mr. Harding?
Yep. It is hard to read that.
Somehow you've deciphered that, Kathy, right? Oh, it's on...
Yeah, so we have a, a motion in a second for endorsement, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you need the Mylar now, Bill?
Sure.
Or do you wanna pick it up tomorrow, which is, lay it out, we'll give them the Mylar. You have to pin. You're a good chap.
You're good, come on up, Ben.
Do you want these copies also, uh...
No, we'll do, they're for us.
Okay.
That's exactly what it is, I don't know. There's this John Hancock on this one. I can't read any of the writing. I gotta take that.
Can you go, Bill? Congratulations.
We'll do these later. We'll just collect these from the, to sign after the meeting.
Okay.
Do we have the public hearing notes? For Bruce?
All right, thank you. Oh, for next, we have, under old business, and it's after seven fifteen, so we'll go on. Seven fifteen, public hearing for Crop Production Services Special Permit Site Plan Review Warehouse Retail Space. And here's the public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning by law, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 3rd, 2013, at seven fifteen PM in the Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, on the application of Crop Production Services, requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two thirty, thirty-one hundred, forty-three hundred, forty-three, forty-four, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning by law located at One Marion Drive in Carver, Mass. Applicant is seeking a special permit and site plan review to construct a twelve thousand six hundred square foot building with warehouse and retail use and to store hazardous materials at the site. Any persons interested and wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan is on file at the town clerk's office and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Carver Planning Board, Bruce Mackie, Chair, published dates, August sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and August twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen. Thank you. All right.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Ry with Land Planning, I'm here with Mike Utley, who's the owner of the property that we, is looking to purchase the property, he's the proponent for this project. Mike is currently, works on Plymouth Street at the Agway Building. He's owned that for quite some time, and he, what they do is they distribute fertilized pesticides and herbicides to generally cranberry growers. And he's just kind of outgrown his existing building, and he's looking to move to another area of town where he can, where it can accommodate the size that he needs for future use.
Steve, when you talk, could you just bring the microphone with you, and that chews out, yeah.
Yeah, to give you a look at the plans, we've got an existing three-acre site that he's looking to move to, which is Lot Four, in an industrial subdivision which was approved back in two thousand and six. Presently, SLT Construction is located to the back right here, and MBO Precast here, and there are other commercial buildings in this area and across the street. We do have a residential zone line that falls in here, and there are residences in this area. The site is, is three acres in size, no wetlands involved with it. The existing conditions of the site are such that it was prepared prior to our going to the site, it was prepared for, for a building, and with the, with the subdivision of Marion Drive, the good existing retention basins that were placed such that these two lots could be developed and with the use of these retention basins. The condition at the front, it's wooded with oaks and white pines generally. And then throughout the middle of the site, which is rather flat, it's gravel, weed, grass kind of a mix. So it's more of an open area that's been disturbed already. And then along the sides, it's grass slope in the front and the backside. What Mike is proposing to put here is a commercial building which will contain ten thousand eight hundred square feet of warehouse area in this large portion of it. In the front, he'll have an office retail space, which will also have bathrooms and a conference room. And generally, that'll be the area that serves the public. What we're providing is some parking in the front and parking along the side. We're, we're required to do eleven spaces based on the computations from the zoning regulations. And we're providing twelve spaces, and Mike feels that's sufficient for his use. And we're providing for truck access around the side to the back of the property where they'll be backing into a loading dock, which will be, have a covered platform on it. And access to the building will be by a sidewalk, there'll be an access on the southerly side and the northerly side. And, and there's a five-foot sidewalk that goes out to the front parking area, as well as giving access to the warehouse itself. Additional access for a forklift that's gonna need to be stored indoors and periodically coming in and out for materials is through a ramp on this side of the building. We're providing fire protection, fire access around the building for fire protection. This is all paved area, and we're providing an ass, reclaimed, excuse me, a reclaimed asphalt area, twelve foot wide in this area to connect to the front and give fire protection. We've got dumpsters on the site, which we're locating the back corner of the property, as well as an area for storage of pallets, which accumulate over time. Drainage for our site is gonna be handled by collecting the roof runoff and infiltrating that on-site through an infiltration system. And that'll carry, handle up to the hundred-year storm. We've got exist, we've got existing water within Marion Drive, which we, we cannot access for fire protection, but we're providing a two-inch water main to the site, just for use for the, for the office, the bathrooms and all that. Now, the, the rest of the drainage that's gonna be coming off the site, I spoke about the roof being infiltrated through an infiltration system, but the, the rest of it is gonna be collected in a manhole and pipe system out to a proposed sediment for bay, grass whale, and then into the retention system that's been designed based on build-out when, when the subdivision was designed. And we're gonna have Cape Cod berm around the outside of each of these areas to separate it from the grassed areas and the landscaped areas. We've got a landscape plan that we've provided, that gives a buffer in the front, as well as directly around the office area, where there's gonna be access for the, for the public here, and also providing some buffer to the, the existing abutis there. Subject system that, that we're designing is gonna be placed in this area, where we know we've got very good soils for the tank out the front. Lighting for the site is shown, basically it's gonna be on the building itself, it's already with one lamp post out by the dumpster area. I think that covers the basics of it, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I indulge, Mike, would you mind kind of explaining what, what you do? I mean, you've been in business in this town for a long time, and just to dispel any fears or rumors or any of that.
Well, the business name that we used to operate under, at the Three Plymouth Street Agwest, Agwest was actually Rasp Incorporated. And that was an acronym for Robert Alberini Spray Products Incorporated. Robert Alberini was my brother-in-law, and he started that business in nineteen seventy-eight. So he put up a building there originally to just store farm equipment. But he had a spray business, which he went around to different cranberry growers and provided chemical application to the growers. And so that grew, and he needed a place to, basically it was still just for his spray business, but store some materials. And so being in the agricultural business, I mean, he just kinda, I guess, overstepped his bounds, if you will, but he used that building for that purpose. And then over, over time, I don't know, somewhere between nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen eighty, got the proper permitting and stuff to use that building for the fertilizer and pesticides, which we store and sell there. I came to work for my brother-in-law in nineteen eighty-three, so I've been there thirty years. And we were, the sign says Agway on the front of the building because we were Agway reps, we represented Agway. But it was not really an Agway location, it was under the name of Rasp Incorporated, privately owned. Well, when my brother-in-law passed away in, five years ago in May, my sister then became the sole owner of the business Rasp, and she got to a point where she no longer wanted to own a business, and it was a lot bigger business than I wanted to, at sixty-one years old, wanted to invest in. So we went to the people where we had purchased most of our products for the last twenty-five years. Crop Production Services and their predecessors, predecessors, which were UHS, United Horticultural Services, and United Agro Products. They had expressed an interest for over twenty years after they see how, what kind of an operation we ran, what kind of volume we put through there, how many cranberry growers in town in the whole southeastern Massachusetts community that we serve, service, and they thought that they really wanted to, have an opportunity to, to purchase that business. So when she gave up on it two years ago, I called Crop Production Services, and before I got fifteen words out of my mouth, they said, "Hold on, Mike, we'll have somebody over there right away." So, over there is from Loveland, Colorado. They're a national company, they have about a thousand, they have about a thousand locations like ours across the United States. They have three hundred locations in Canada and a couple of hundred between New Zealand and Australia. So it's a big operation, it's called Loveland, Loveland Incorporated, and they are part of Agrium. I don't know if you've ever heard of Agrium, but Agrium is one of the big three fertilizer manufacturers in the world. And CPS is, falls under their umbrella, if you will. So that's how we came to be purchased by CPS. And a couple of the reasons why we're looking to move to a new facility, number one, we're just too darn close to a cranberry bog where we are. We shouldn't be there. It just happened that we were there, and we've, you know, we've, we've used up our goodwill, if you will. Before we have an issue, we wanna get out of there. And so the company is requiring that we move, they've given us time enough to do that, we don't have to do it right now, but we have to do. And, and also, my sister gave us fi-, a five-year lease on the building, so we can stay there for up to five years. But we'd like to get out of there as soon as possible. And we need more, more room, that's the other reason, we need a bigger building, and there's no room for expansion where we are. We couldn't move closer to the road or away from the cranberry bog, we just need to move. So I think we're doing a town of service by moving to an industrial location where there's no wetlands involved. Not up there by ourselves, there's other businesses in the area. But it is out of the way to a certain extent, and I think it's a good place for our business to be located. And, like I say, I've been at it for thirty-three years, so...
I thought that was important.
Yeah, it does.
I learned a lot since they started this.
It gives us a history of what's going on.
I'll be working there before you know it.
Does anybody have any questions?
I don't, it's a lot to digest.
I can go through the department heads, we did have a technical review meeting a couple weeks ago. And I should add, Mike and Steve and Jeff and a whole host of people from CPS, we've met four or five times...
Three to four, yeah.
With the fire department, with, and with the building commissioner, and the conservation agent, and the board of health, just to deal with a lot of this, these issues, and we went back and forth on a lot of stuff. Don't need to air that out here, really, and it was fine, very professional. But I think we've come to a stage where we have a building that the fire department, board of health is comfortable with in the location and the site design, so I should stay, say that. Sean Martin was gonna be here, I sent you an email this morning, he couldn't make it, as you can tell. I will go through his comments, and I did ask... And I did ask Steve to hold off on revising any plans until after tonight's meeting and after a site visit. And then hopefully he can revise the plans, get the check-off from the fire department and especially Shaun. And then maybe we can be ready at the next meeting. With the board of health, they are fine with the conceptual location for the sewage disposal system. They've done a perk, it's carver, everything perks pretty well here. And they're obviously very pleased that we're serviced by Town Water. And I'm sure the chairman of the Water Commission behind me is very pleased about that. As always, he needs a civil engineer to do your onsite septic system and once we get rolling on this project. Shaun, he wants Shaun to review the drainage regs, which I'll get into. And I know, Steve, I don't know how prepared you are to answer some of these, but he wanted to know about the code gas trap regulations and the water bubbler variants. Have you gotten anywhere with that?
Mike and I briefly talked about the water bubbler issue, whether we should provide one in the building or not. He thought he'd, he'd need an air wash anyway. We thought maybe we could just provide a bubbler anyway.
Yeah.
So we might not ask for an air inside there.
Okay. And, and then there was one about the local emergency planning committee, which Mr. Walsh is the chairman of, and you guys participate in that.
We have not participated very much recently, just because they have their meeting at ten o'clock in the morning. And it's zoo time around there, yes. But I would absolutely participate whenever we.
And Tom was comfortable. He went through the plans and he knows what's going on. He told me he works with you all the time. Fire Department, he had asked if they hire a fire protection engineer, which we actually have two, I believe. They didn't get one, they got two. I guess, I don't even know why. I can't remember. But the building is gonna have a sprinkler system, obviously fire alarm and fire protection, water, fire protection. And that's because they exceed the seventy-five hundred square foot threshold. He talks about having the pole stations and the hormon stro- warning devices, smoke and heat detectors and all that, which you'll go through when you go through the building permitting stage. And most importantly, it meets all their access requirements. As you know, fire department requires three sides accessible. I think you got all four on this one. Conservation didn't have, because there's no wetlands, no resource area. Sarah's biggest concern was that we address section forty-three hundred, which is the water resource protection area, which we are through your permit and which Shaun has reviewed. My comments weren't that many because the site is well-done. But I wanted the board, and I've asked them to take another look. Now, you've, especially Will and maybe Bruce and Rosemary have dealt with some other projects on this street. And we have this situation where we have an industrial park and we have some residents. So I've asked them to take a little bit more notice of, and I, of the two corners. This corner, this is the Marion Drive of this corner here, to buffer this a little more so that the view sheds are protected. And to a lesser degree, but some to wrap it around here if the cars come in this way. Because I think we have to be sensitive toward Plymouth Street. Signage, you guys aren't ready yet?
I, I can show you, you know, just a, this is what the sign would look like. I know it's, I can bring it around if you, if you'd like.
Please, give it to the chairman, please.
This is what it would look like. It's probably, I would prefer to have it white with green lettering, but that's what it would look like. Be some nice posts here. And I had somebody send me a picture of one with a white one and I cannot locate it, but that's what it looks like.
If, Steve, if you.
Actually, I do have a white. So it would look like that in lives to the other side. I prefer the white with the green lettering rather than the dark green out there. That's just my opinion. That's the sign. But it would probably, if I had my way, be white and green lettering. I tried to get him to send me a, something on the computer this afternoon. I just couldn't get it done, so.
If you could, when you decide if it's gonna be white with green, send me the cut sheet on that. And also put the location, the proposed location on where it is and the dimensions. And they can approve this while the hearing's still open, instead of having to come back in and the whole nine yards. I also said that we need a fence cut sheet on the dumpster. And we haven't seen any architectural plans. We're gonna need to see them before they make a final decision. I'll go to Shaun's as best as I can. He talks about the accessible ramps at either side of Lot Four, clearly labeled the Cape Cod berm to be removed, so that during construction that can happen. I'll need some help from Steve on this. Is there a long-term stormwater pollution prevention plan for the facility? Did we talk about that, Steve?
We didn't really. We just kinda brainstormed it out.
Yeah. You'll prepare an answer to all these. We did talk quite a bit about the cutoffs on the lights. And he actually had a, he talks about the halofan wall packet and to make sure that, again, paying attention to the residents, that these cutoffs don't spill out over them. We deal with that quite a bit. And then we talked about landscaping and it's the same things that I brought up. Those two corners to try to buffer them a little bit more. You know, Shaun isn't, and his landscape architect aren't thrilled with the white pines. And we should take a different look because after a while, they're not gonna provide a buffer anymore. It'll get too high. You see right through them. So essentially, I think that's the comments. And then, and if you read Shaun's email from today, his concerns are obviously the hazardous and potentially hazardous materials and make sure they're stored indoors in accordance with applicable laws. The lighting and the landscaping. He talks again about the approach to the, from the west, coming from Middle Borough, so that the truck access area is well buffered. And then the eastern white pines, that we could probably use a different, different species there that gives more long-term buffering. So I think, you know, we, I think we got through the, the biggest hurdles with some of the preliminary. And now we're just dealing with some site issues that are very manageable, in my opinion.
Mr. Hunter, snow removal.
But I'm sure it will be pointed out.
Which one? I didn't see.
These areas that you see look like clouds basically along the side of a, 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 one along this area and another one that will encompass this area.
It's, it's labeled.
Yep, I see it. Okay, I just didn't catch it. Thank you.
What will be stored outside and whereabouts would it be stored?
Most likely, very little, if anything. One thing that I can think of that I sell is hydroseeding mulch. So bales of like peat moss, you know, but it's for hydroseeding. Everybody stores peat moss outside. We may have three or four pallets of that outside. But I won't, I can't store fertilizer outside, other than during the day while we're using it, moving it around. There'll be most likely nothing stored outside. You go over the store now, I wouldn't dare leave anything outside. So there's a few pallets and a couple of propane tanks and a propane cage. And it's, I'd just like to mention that the hazardous materials that we carry, as far as we are concerned, we've done our due diligence to interpret and figure out just exactly what class building, as far as the fire department, fire codes go. And we feel more than adequately in saying that we actually do fall into the mercantile category, not the hazardous category. And by a fairly good margin. There are a couple of products that we do carry or do sell on occasion. But one of them is such that it's, it's a product that controls mites on cranberry bogs. Any great quantity of that would cause an issue. But I never have more than five or six cases in there at any one time, anyway. And I don't believe, if you have mites on a cranberry bog, that doesn't mean you need to treat them today. You can wait three or four days and treat them. So I mean, I would bend over backwards to do whatever I had to do to make sure that I never had more than the two or three cases in there that I would need on a, you know, two or three week basis. And if somebody come in with a big mite issue, then we'd bring more in. The other product is a product called Vapam. And believe it or not, that one in the regs, is it, have you got it? Well, that's not what I was looking for. But in the, in the regs, it says for outside, for storage of Vapam, which is a hazardous material, fifteen hundred gallons, which is the most I've ever sold, is considered the limit. We never store it. If I have a customer who orders Vapam, we make the arrangements and it has to come in one day and out the same day. Customer either picks it up or we deliver it to his farm the same day. It never stays there. It's just in and out because I don't want it in the building. It's, it's that, you know, it's that dangerous. So it's in and out the same day. And as far as the other hazardous materials, they're dwindling every year. We're getting to a lot more friendly, user-friendly, environmentally friendly and safe products. So the, the days of keeping five thousand gallons of diazonal in the building because you needed it are gone. I mean, we keep two or three pallets, which is four or five hundred gallons. And, you know, other hazardous materials along with that, but we're way under the, way under the hazardous material class H threshold.
Well, that, this, these are the type of discussions we've had with the fire department and the building department. And, and as you can see here, Mike, and he's documented this with the fire department and the building department, that they, other than that one item, they're below the thresholds already and will remain there. That other one, he's gonna make sure he's always below the threshold. So I'll suggest that if you do approve this eventually, that we have some conditions to, to that effect.
How much to be stored in the building at, at one time?
And the building will be fully contained.
Right.
I mean, I don't know how much you know about that, but this building will be built such that it'll be fully contained. It'll have slope floors inside, so that if there was a fire or if we did spill a pallet of liquid material, it'll be, it'll be, stay right in our building on the floor. It can't get outside. And we have to go up, up a ramp and out and down. And the, the walls on the building will be built up eight or ten inches off the concrete. So we'll have a curbing around the whole perimeter of the storage warehouse building.
So nothing will get out and go into the soils. Okay. You have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad you mentioned that, 'cause that would help on, do you have some type of a spill plan that, that you have, that you use in your buildings?
Absolutely. Jeff and I are both trained as HazWhopper.
Could you give us that plan, just so we could have that on file? That pretty, the design of the building that shows that slope and it's self-contained satisfies my end on that. Could you specify, probably in just a memo or a letter, the amount of outside storage quantities? And where you'd be placing them on the outs- outside in the lot somewhere? Specific area it's so designated for, set them out?
Yeah.
That would be fine with me. I have a question on the dumpster location. I know that it's a great area for, for, for them to come around and do that. You would see, when they come in, they pick up to dump. You will, you'll see as we move forward in this process, and I'm sure the owner of the property and his brother have, have told you about the concern with the neighbors on noise and lighting. I was wondering if there was another place on the property more closer towards the SLT property, where you might be able to locate that in the back right corner? So the dumpster people will be able to drive into that location. It's a little bit further away for noise containment, for emptying. The noise and the lighting's gonna be one of the biggest issues. I think with your spill plan should satisfy any type of contamination leaving the building. I don't know how we'd be able to leave. But I, I see that as potentially being a problem, especially they dump all hours of the night, early in the morning. I have one next door to my house that they dump at four-thirty in the morning, which is great.
You're up.
I am up, so it doesn't really bother me, but I know my neighbor isn't yet. He complains to me all the time about it, so. The snow removal, I think, is okay. The emergency access lane, is that just a single lane that of, of the recycled and?
Twelve foot wide as, as the.
As what they wanted? It's not the whole area out front, correct?
No, it is. It's just that, that area and the access area itself. The rest is grassed.
Awesome. That'd be great. And let me see, what else did I have? You said you're gonna have fire protection inside the building. I'm sure the fire department's covered this back and forth and your two representatives that you hired. But just for the record, is that a chemical-based fire protection or is it water?
Most likely. Right now, tonight, it's gonna be water.
Okay.
But I can't definitively answer that until we get all our numbers back.
Okay. And if it is, is it going to be, you'd obviously have to have some type of system or something like that, because right now we can't provide that water protection.
That's something else that we are still waiting for the, my general contractor has been on vacation and then came back to have back surgery. So he's been out for a week. So we've been kind of tied up for the last two and a half weeks. But he's working with them. If we went with a dry, some type of a dry system, a foam or powder or whatever, my G C says it would just be outrageously priced, because you'd have to have a redundant system. You'd, you'd get one puff with the dust or foam, and if that didn't take the fire out, you could have another backup. So it'll be tanks underground with whatever the fire protection engineers come up with for an amount of water.
For volume.
And I believe, I'd, I'd rather not be quoted on this, but thirty thousand gallons is what we're looking at.
And it, if that's the case, and just, I know the number isn't correct, so I'm just gonna say it's two gallons, okay? For argument's sake. On that, the lower part of your, your drain catch-all? Is that designed to catch that or even with the upper end? And the, the reason why I'm saying that is if you have overflow in case of a fire or some type of hazard, wanna make sure everything's contained in that little swimming pool, per se.
Yep.
All right, good.
Wayne, I actually, the, the, I think the fire protection engineer and your contractor went and talked to the building commissioner about Norfolk Power and their system. The fire chief liked that one and it was the most inexpensive design he's seen. So I don't know if they're copying that one or not, but.
I would imagine they'll probably come up pretty close to that, yes.
Okay. Other than that, I, you know, we talked about the lighting issue. We've, we've had problems up there. So the typical cutoffs would be great. You know, try to keep the looms real down low, especially towards Plymouth Street, so we don't affect the neighbors. You know, there's a, there's a wedding there that happens, you know. Shipments, what time you get your product in, timeframes?
We don't wanna be there any more than we want to be. So our hours are basically seven-thirty to four-thirty. However, during the busy season, there are times when they are in there at six-thirty. You know, not much before that. And it would be just Jeff or I, we don't have customers in there at that time. But we may get a load of fertilizer in, which would be unloaded on the, the northerly side of the building. Shielded noise and everything would be somewhat shielded from Plymouth Street residents. I don't see that it's really any issue. That's my opinion.
I think we regulated the, and correct me if I'm wrong, the delivery times of truck traffic going up and down for SLT and MBO. I thought we did that a long time ago, but I'm not sure.
We have SLT here. Perhaps he'd like to check.
I didn't wanna put him on the hot seat, but had to pull you in. Do you remember?
Yeah, I think the hours were restricted only to the, to the retail component that we had. And I think we'd explained during the permitting process that we work all over the state. So some trucks work, you know, they'll have to, the crew will have to leave, you know, five o'clock, six o'clock in the morning. Generally, nothing, you know, we try not to do it before six o'clock. A lot of times it's closer to six-thirty.
Gotcha.
And then if, then we do do snow removal during the winter. So, it, it's seeing there's a plow trucks leaving, but it's, it's kind of a one-shot deal. It's not constant traffic. It's, you know, two or three trucks leave, two or three trucks will come back, and that's about it.
Thank you. Um, we just look at that, Jack, and see what that was and.
And the same thing, excuse me, the same thing with the afternoon or evening. Again, we want out of there at five o'clock, just like everybody else does. Occasionally, there's a truck driver that gets stuck somewhere in traffic and we wanna wait for him and load him at six, but when, I mean,
That's understandable.
The old days are gone. You know, being near the late thirty, nine o'clock, that doesn't happen anymore.
I just wanted to be specific when we, as we walk down this process, what we've set in a standard for, you know, your neighbors. Um, we wanna make sure that we uphold those same standards. Um, at this time, I don't have anything else. I'm really curious getting out there, looking from the proposed site at the neighbors. That's gonna be my key for the buffering and for landscaping, type of trees. I know that, um, Fasano Nail doesn't like the type of tree pick, but we can see what we can do there. I'm good.
Anybody else? Thank you all. Anybody else? All right, uh, this is a public meeting, so if anybody would, uh, like to, uh, come up, make any, uh, ask any questions, make any comments. Seeing no one else, seeing no one, uh.
So, if I may.
Yep.
What I'm, what the board's looking for in addition to all the comments that the departments has had is you need your spill plan. You need the architecturals. Uh, I'm gonna check on the limits, um, that we place on SLT and MBO. Uh, we need the location of outdoor storage, the quantities, and, um, the types. And, um, consider relocating the dumpster.
If that works.
Well, in, in my mind, if you'd like me to explain why I.
Definitely.
It's nice to have.
It might help.
Out of my way, tucked up there in the corner. I'll do whatever I would have to do to, you know, put some more trees around there to, to close it off so that. And the reason being, if we put it down in the northwest corner there, we get sometimes six, seven, eight pickup trucks with tag-along trailers in there at one time. When it's, and it's only three days or five days during the June and July months when everybody's in there for their fertilizer all the same time.
When everything is.
Be tough to get them turned around, spun around, turn around, get back out. If I keep that area up there up in the corner, it's really out of my way. So, I'd do whatever I had to do to close that in a little better with trees, shrubs, whatever.
Well, maybe on the sidewalk, we can look at that. Maybe it's really not an issue, but.
I think maybe you'll find that it's not, but.
Okay.
We can look at it.
Just to add to what Mike was saying, uh, turning radius for these trucks that are right at the end of the loading dock.
Could you use the mic? It's mostly for the residents at home. Sorry about that. Sorry. Uh, turning radius for these, these trucks that are gonna be pulling into the end of the loading dock, really come out to the edge of the pavement. So, to put it back in this area is gonna be difficult to make this turn and get around in that area.
Okay.
So, perhaps any, the site visit's gonna tell, but additional buffering around that?
Yeah. If we, yeah, we could have that marked out.
That's a good idea.
And the building and the basin, the, the drainage basin. Oh, is the drainage basin there now?
Drainage basin in.
This is existing.
They're extending it.
Okay.
So, there's three things, two things we'll need is to continue the hearing, obviously, and also a site visit.
Yep.
Which one you wanna do first?
Site visit first.
If you will. Well. You have a site visit on Tuesday at five PM at Edenville, which I got a hunch will take a while.
Yep.
I'm gonna sit, are you up for two? One on Monday?
You have a meeting on Monday night?
Seven. This won't take long. This won't take.
No, no, actually it won't. No, shouldn't.
Five o'clock?
I think you can get there by five.
So, uh, Monday, the ninth?
Yep.
At five. Okay.
Now, were you, were you indicating that you wanted the building to be staked out?
The four corners of the building, the dumpster, do you need the retention pond? It's, it's there.
No, if it's there, then, then we don't need it staked.
Maybe the curb cut?
Yeah, I think the most important thing is, uh, how about the, do we have lighting? Do we have lighting stanchions out? Has, has that in?
And one pole.
Just one out by the dumpster.
Okay.
What am I? Huh?
Okay. So, what do you have for a, a meeting day?
Uh, ninth at five.
Make a motion for the site, site visit for Monday, the ninth, September ninth at five PM.
Second.
A motion in the second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I would suggest a continuation till September seventeenth at seven fifteen.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing, uh, till September seventeenth at seven fifteen.
Second.
Will, will that give you enough time to, um, work over?
We're talking about that right now. Because of the fire protection issue and what they're gonna come up with and us putting it on the plans.
Yeah.
I'm tied up all this week, even if they get it to me.
Mm-hmm.
So, if you, I, if we push it off to the next meeting, when is the next meeting?
Is that okay?
Yep. Yeah, I mean, you know, at this point, we really feel that we need to get the permitting process done. If we get the permitting process done, then Mr. Obuschinsky can get paid. And, uh, we can build a building six weeks.
Not all the way in, you know.
Well, it kinda is.
October first, then. Okay, that'll be fine. October first, seven fifteen. Yep. Uh, I would draw my last motion and change it to continue the public hearing to October first at seven fifteen.
Have a motion in the second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, that's good news for Steve, Anna's, because then after the site visit, you should have everything you need to finalize these plans. And it gives me time to traipse them around to the different departments and get their sign-offs. I think that, I'm glad, I didn't know you, I know we had this discussion. Stuff happens.
I just think, yeah, we have to do that.
Okay.
Better off doing that.
Makes it easier for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Steve, I got a question. I know you sent me these plans electronically. Is there any way? I, I wanna post them on, we have a Facebook page that shows projects in, in the loop. And I can't post on Facebook a PDF. I can only fo- post a JPG. Think about that. And the architecturals, well, you got somebody over there, you know. We played around with it tonight. We might've got it. I don't know. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Um, just, I'm, even, you know, that took, what, forty-five minutes? And this is after we hashed out a lot of things. We would've still been here.
Oh, I, I would imagine. It, it's not a simple, uh.
The site plan's fine. The use is.
Right.
It's complicated. And my whole thing was, fire chief has to be happy. Good. One thousand percent. Have a nice day.
Moving on.
Uh.
Hello, Chad.
Chad will be back with us in a second.
Um, you don't need him for the next one anyway.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to, uh, a vote for Form C, Sun- Sunshine Preserve Rocky Meadow Development Corporation.
Um, uh, at the last hearing, last meeting, the three of you, Chad wasn't there, so he can't vote on this. Um, they've met all the conditions, all the wa- there's no waivers. They've dotted the i's, crossed the t's. I sent you a draft. Um, Kathy and, um, straightened it out a little formatting-wise, and I think it's ready for you guys.
Yeah, all we have to do is sign this, right?
And vote. And sign.
I make a motion to approve the, um, definitive subdivision for, um, Sunshine Preserve.
Second.
Yeah, it's written.
Have a motion in the second. Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstention.
So, yeah, three.
Zero, one.
Zero, yep.
Do you have a copy for them to sign? Good.
All right. So, we'll go on to other business. We have, uh, planning board notes. Does anybody have any, anything they would like to say?
I do.
Oh, okay.
The marijuana committee will be meeting Thursday, and, um, we've put together, I think, a good, um, bylaw, and we're going to review it on Thursday. And hopefully, if everything is okay, we'll move forward and present it to the selectmen.
Oh, great.
Question. Can we, can we see it before it goes to the selectmen?
Oh, yeah. I, I, it was my, we're talking about the marijuana bylaw?
Yes.
It was my understanding, once the subcommittee has finalized it, we would make a presentation to the planning board.
That was my understanding.
Yeah.
Oh, I, I might've misunderstood. I thought you said that you presented to the selectmen, but.
No, I, I might've. No, it'll come to the planning board first, and then if it gets approved, it'll go to the selectmen. You're correct, Will. That's what I did say.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I didn't even hear it.
Thank you for listening.
I have a, I have a couple of things. Um, first thing I'd like to do is thank, uh, Jack and Kathy. Um, we've kinda tried to transition a little bit, um, over to, um, doing a little bit more electronically than, um, than not. And I do appreciate all the extra efforts. It seems pretty easy. So, I like that. I like it to be up on the wall, but we'll get there.
We'll get there.
So, I like it. I think it's, it's, it's pretty good, so. And number two, I just wanted the public to know that, um, the redevelopment authority was gonna be having a meeting on this Thursday night at six o'clock. Um, we're gonna be entertaining, um, the request from the building study committee on funding an independent, um, was that an independent look or an independent study of all the?
Peer review.
Peer review of all the documents that the, uh, building study committee has done on all the buildings in question, uh, infrastructure in the town for the fire station, police station, schools, stuff like that. Um, I think it's well worth moving forward on that. It, it meets our criteria, so. Just wanted people to know that that's moving forward and the redevelopment authority's looking at trying to help if we can. That's all I got. Anybody else?
Uh, just congratulations to Nancy Green, moving her business over to the vacant bank.
Oh.
Another.
Wonderful move.
In front of Sodell's.
In front of Sodell's.
Oh, that's fabulous.
That was a bank, huh, at one point?
I'm pretty sure that was, yeah.
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 That's awesome.
You'll be getting the signed permit. Pete Allegrini contacted me today at your next meeting.
Very good. Anything else? I did see that, uh, some people were growing marijuana, uh, before the bylaw came into play. So, it's a good thing we have this bylaw coming up.
They were doing it a long time before the bylaw was in place.
Uh, it just goes to show that, you know, that these, these things will come in handy later on.
Very well stated, sir.
All right. Um, planners' notes.
I got a few things. Um, since the chairman of the North Carver Water District's here, I'm very, very, very pleased to announce that our partnership, the North Carver Water District's partnership with Deacon's took off today at six AM. They started retrieving water from the North Carver Water District. Um, no big glitches. Um, and, uh, every day, they're gonna be retrieving water, um, which will help them and us. So, I'm very happy with that. So, I don't think I told Kevin that, but.
That's a great partnership for us to help the business in town.
Yep.
So, how, how, how does that work?
Uh, there's a special, uh, there, on, on one of the row, I'm not gonna, the, the water department, the operators didn't want me to really identify the location that much because it is expensive, some of the stuff. But there's a location where, um, they come and there's a special tap and they hook up a tanker truck. And they take about eight thousand gallons per truck away, maybe seventy-five hundred gallons. Um, and they're contracted to take a minimum of twenty-five thousand gallons a day and a maximum of fifty thousand gallons a day. And it helps with revenue, but it also helps flush the system out, which they've had problems with, um, in the past about keeping the system flush, so.
Solves a couple of problems.
Most importantly, it helps Deacon's. Helps Deacon's a lot with their processing plant and stuff as we work forward to helping them down there.
Um, speaking of that, I have a meeting with the Deacon's, um, CEO and the interim town administrator next Tuesday to kind of talk about what Will's talking about, what's their long-term plan. You know, they're, they're shipping sewage out and bringing water in, and it's probably not the best way to run a business. But, uh, we're gonna try to help them as much as we can. Quickly, um, you will be getting a couple of projects in the near future. Um, down by the Carver Wareham Marion landfill, the Seemass landfill on Federal Road, on the Wareham border, Makepeace is gonna propose a solar project. You'll be getting that, I'm told, in mid-September. I met with them last week on that. I haven't seen the plans, uh, but they did tell me that they're coming. Um, also, it seems there's some life, uh, at the intersection of North Main and Plymouth at the old Mizili Farm stand. It seems like that's taken some more life, and we may see, uh, a small restaurant coming in on there. Um, and two other things, um, we have contracted, the local housing partnership has contracted with the Resource Inc., um, to purchase homes, re- renovate them and get first-time home buyers in. That's under contract now. And they actually have two houses in Crystal Lake that they're working with Fanny May on to try to get in before they hit the market and try to get some homeowners in there. So, it's already working. They've only been under contract since Thursday, so. And lastly, Crystal Lake is community gardens. If you didn't see the Board of Selectmen's meeting, um, the community garden's becoming a reality. We're, this fall, we're gonna see the trees come down, stumps get taken out. And by spring, we're gonna see a community garden there, which is a great idea. That's it.
Great. Thank you. All right, so let's go on to the approval of the minutes. Uh, we have two. One is, uh, July sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen.
Oh. Now, who can vote on? I'm very confused about this. But these three, these guys can. Oh, good.
I can't vote on the next one.
Okay, that's fine. We've been holding off. The sixteenth, you voted on, but it was a two, zero, one vote, you know. There's, the jury's out on whether that was, uh, allowed, cause it was a majority of present. I thought it'd be best, and Kathy reminded me of this, that it'd be best if we get a solid three votes on that.
So, we, uh, so we revote this? Okay.
Yep. And Will can't vote.
If anybody'd like to make a motion then. So, I was here, Rosemarie was here, Kevin. Kevin was here, but he's not here tonight. And Chad was here.
Yep.
So.
Right.
If somebody could make a motion.
I will make the motion to approve, uh, the planning board minutes for July sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, as written.
A second.
Have a motion in a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that was three and.
File abstention.
One abstention, one abstention. So we'll go on to. Oh, do we have it? Yes.
The August twentieth.
August twentieth, two thousand and thirteen minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve as written.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we have, uh, three, four, and one abstention. All right, so we'll go on to, uh, correspondence.
There's none. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion to adjourn in a second, uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And good night, everyone. Thank you.